All right, folks. It's seven o'clock. Like I thought y'all did the December Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a call, so we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, Stephen White, United States of America, and to your father for which sins my hates. And I've got a witness who will be redeemed justice for all.
What?
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us all to gather this evening. Thank you for giving us another month, another week, another day, another breath of life. This time of year, we definitely want to say thank you very much and take the time and the business to reflect and realize that you're the entire reason we celebrate Christmas. That's why we do it. And not only that, but help us to continue to reflect that throughout the upcoming year, every month. Lord, thank you for each and every person's here. Please watch over them tonight. Give them safe travels home and thank you for allowing each of us to come to these meetings to make the decisions to help the county and continue to watch over us tonight as we go through this meeting. Amen.
Amen.
Well, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Cold chilling night. Bring this to the agenda. Gentlemen, you got any comment? Any amendments to the agenda you'd like to speak of?
Like to table this. Smith, Kyle, until we get some more information on that.
Okay, so you want to remove that from the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Right. I've got one to add. River Street has an update. We have some contract costs later on, but they have their monthly update. I was gonna move that to right before supervisor activities and committee reports. That's fine with everybody. Anything else? Somebody want to give us a motion to amend the agenda to remove the tower discussion and add the River Street update?
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor of those two changes, raise your hand. Questions, curious? Thank you, gentlemen. Bring this to the November meetings. Any questions, concerns, changes? Hang on. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Questions approved on the November meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion on the floor to approve the meeting, regular meetings from November. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Same thing with the financial report. Questions, concerns, anything we need to point out?
Make a motion to approve as a block.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Motion on the floor to approve the financial report as a block. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. That brings it to the public comment time. Anybody wishing to speak about general stuff? Don't think we have a public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight. If you have comments about that, hold it till then, but if you'd like to address the board, please state your name and your address and try to keep it to around three minutes.
All right, I'm Martin Pomple, 16211 Church Street. This was something I was going to wait till after the new year to bring up, but looking over today's agenda, it's actually relevant and I think it needs to be said beforehand. The Building Hope Charity is something I've been looking into since the last meeting and already contacted Virginia Agricultural Department Consumer Affairs. In October, there was an unfortunate accident that, you know, I'm sorry that it happened. However, through social media posting, that charity was raising money for Sean Wyatt, who happens to be the chief operating officer according to 2022 tax forms of that charity. That is very much a conflict of interest. And from what I've been told through the State Department, that's not something you can really do. You cannot be a chief operating officer and raise money no matter how good the cause is for yourself, for your own self. So as of yesterday, I've turned in all the documents I've had and waiting to hear back, but and I'm glad that money's going to first responder. It's nothing against that. I know people come after me for it, but right is right, wrong is wrong, and rules are rules. And I think when we do these things, no matter how good we say the intentions are or sometimes how much of a show sometimes they become, we need to keep those things in mind, that there is a right and wrong way to do things. Second, when discussing conflicts of interest, something that I can't believe slipped past our school administration and our school board, but going through bills and information in board docs, I've found where there's two incidences where county funds have been funneled to a elective representative on this board, and that would also be Sean Wyatt. Through the school documentation and their receipts, Seventh Gear Auto Body has received payments, one of $474.95 for windshield replacement and a second time of $4,372 for bodywork. Now, once again, maybe there was good intentions here, I don't know, but there's still a right and wrong way to do it. And I do not think it is very ethical for, one, for county funds to be funneled through our county systems to people who are serving on the board and, second, whose spouse is also in school leadership role. To me, that is two direct conflicts of interest. That is by far best practices. I'd be interested to see the RFQs that were put out to other businesses on these, and we'll be doing so after the new year. So I just want to bring those attentions before the county. I know some people aren't going to be happy about it, but it is what it is. Right is right, wrong is wrong, and those are concerns. So Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Thank you for the comments. Whirling.
Good evening. To provide an update on our area headquarters operations this month, they've spent a lot of time doing slope mowing throughout the county, cleaning back the vegetation along the right-of-way, particularly on 360. I know they still have a little more work to do on 360, but they'll continue to do that as the cold weather sets in. They've also been performing shoulder repairs along various routes, placing shoulder stone to make sure we don't have low shoulders that vehicles might run off the road. Those efforts have also been concentrated on 360 for a large majority of it. They've performed pothole patching countywide as needed, and we've continued to inspect snow equipment for the upcoming or maybe current snow season for contractors. Additionally, we've been working at the intersection of Route 153, Five Forks, and Bevels Bridge with the adjacent property owner to address some site distance issues with trees there. We're working with them to either remove them themselves. We've noted where the right-of-way is located and we'll clear those trees ourselves if the property owner doesn't choose to do it. We just wanted to give them that option. From traffic studies and special requests, we're still reviewing the higher volume crossovers along 360 for striping and signage. And then I think you all had expressed interest in pursuing some funding applications for some of those crossovers that don't qualify for traffic signals. So we're working on developing some of those for the upcoming smart scale season, which will be in the spring. And we're working on getting environmental clearance for the county's next rural rustic project, which will be Route 620 Stony Point Road, and that's anticipated to take place next construction season during the summer. And those are all the updates I have this evening, unless there are any questions.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
The Hulsbury Road on the Cumberland side, do they plan to pay that? Is that in the, I know you're just not sure.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything about it?
I haven't. I can check with the residency administrator in Lynchburg District and see if Cumberland has any interest in adding that as a a rural rustic project. I'll see if it's on their priority list.
Because we did our side. It's a nice road.
Right.
When Stony Point gets done, it'll be all the way through paid.
Yeah, that's right. I'll check with them and see if that's a priority on Cumberland's secondary six-year plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for looking at 38153.
Yes, sir.
That'll, that'll be nice if we can get that straight.
Yeah, there's a lot of crate myrtles there, so unfortunately, they are causing a site distance concern, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wharton.
Yes, sir.
I just thought of it. Have you got enough people to push snow in this area of the county or what?
We, we've met our goals for contractors, but I would never turn anybody away. So we'll, we'll sign folks up and on the hopefully off chance that we have a multi-foot event, we would call them in, but.
Well, I'm a contractor and I got a grower named Brady Deal. I get all the money that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we won't turn anybody away if they want to sign up to push for us, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
School board?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Harvey. Our end of November K-12 enrollment was 1522, pre-K-12 enrollment 1603, and ADM was 1525. Amelia County Public Schools has released an RFP for Architectural Services for the new CTE facility during the October 9th meeting. We have selected a vendor and are currently reviewing the contract with our attorney. Contract is scheduled to go before the school board at the January 8th meeting. We have also been awarded a Virginia Department of Education Security Grant. All three schools were awarded funding under this grant. Usually, we have one or two schools, but fortunately, this time, all three have been named, so we're very excited about that. We plan on utilizing this grant funding to provide hurricane or ballistic security window film for all bottom-floor windows, classroom security door hardware, additional two-way radios, upgrading the front entrance access controls to IP-enabled devices, vaping and gunshot detectors throughout the district, and additional cameras to cover blind spots. Mr. Trump will address the appropriation request for this grant. The budget process for FY22 has begun. During the month of December, Mr. Trump and I met with principals and directors to receive budget needs for their departments and their schools for the next fiscal year. On February 16th, 2024, we will present the budget draft to the school board. After this date, we are requesting an ad hoc committee comprised of two members of the Board of Supervisors and two members of the school board to discuss the budget proposal. In your packet, you have the November financial reports, and Mr. Trump is here to share those reports.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm sharing with you the November FY24 finance reports. At this point in the year, we would anticipate our operational revenues and expenditures being at about 36%. We are below that mark with revenues and expenditures at 31.72%, and this is in line with our recent trends. In the textbook fund, expenditures and revenues are at 8.97%, and the cafeteria fund, expenditures are at 25.09%. As discussed last month, revenues are catching up to our expenditures in the cafeteria fund at this point in the year, and we are on pace for claims revenue to exceed basic operating expenditures in the cafeteria fund. We are excited to have the outcome of our public hearing this evening to address the budget revisions. And we have the one additional appropriation request that Dr. Harper spoke of for your approval this evening. Are there any questions about the finance reports before moving on to the appropriations request? Okay. Thank you. So we are presenting an appropriation to you this evening in the amount of $175,000. This appropriation request is to, is due to a significantly higher-than-usual security grant award in the 2023-2024 school year. This is an annual program with a varying award based on allocated funding and application requests across the state for which we predict an annual award of approximately $75,000. As Dr. Harper spoke of, we put out proposals for the up to and beyond the maximum of $250,000. We usually get an award for one school or even part of one school. This year's announced award took Amelia County Public Schools to the maximum allowable amount of $250,000 from the grant. There is a 25% local match for all reimbursement requests. However, we believe we'll be able to meet this match through reprioritization of some of our local funding already. So there's no additional local match being requested for this appropriation request. After this appropriation and the revised security grant figure presented in the budget for approval this evening, the total anticipated revenue and security grant line will total $327,200.
All right. So let's do the appropriation. What's the pleasure to board?
I just have one question. So because if is this included in the revised figures, though, that we're going to be going through the public hearing also?
Well, usually this, this, the, the $175,000 appropriation requested here is not in that budget document.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Okay. Yeah. I just didn't know the timing, whether the timing you had incorporated or not.
This, we usually don't have updates to the security grant throughout the year unless there's something small. This year, we've had two. One is incorporated in the budget document because we got that earlier in the summer. One, we just received much more recently, so we have to do a separate appropriation here.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no other comments, questions, I'd make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $175,000 state grant for security funding.
And you mind putting in there that the 25% local match will be covered by the school also?
Yep. No, that is, yes, I do not mind. Correct, with no, no additional fund, local funding required from the county as it is anticipated to already be absorbed by the schools in their existing budget. Correct.
All right, gentlemen, motion on the floor to make the appropriations of the 175 with the 25% local match met by the school. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Hey, gentlemen.
Um, I'll tell you what, while you're here, do you have any adjustments to do in the public hearing or the amended?
It's okay.
Do you want to present the amended budget to us? And I guess you go do that and we'll do, we can take care of all your stuff right here.
Yeah. Absolutely. So in the board packet, you should have the different accounts of the revised Commonwealth budget is going to affect. There are two reasons why we're seeing the differences. You're going to see reductions and increases. One reason for reductions is the school has adopted a budget that is projecting a lower ADM than initially adopted by the board. So that's some of the reductions there. So reduce ADM means less money for the standards of quality funding. Second piece is the increased funds from the Commonwealth awarded to the specific accounts. You can see some of those. There is one in particular you'll see noted with bold new account. That's the All in Virginia Fund. That's the biggest piece of it. That's $723,243. So if y'all have any questions on that, it's really just aligning our accounts with what the new projected Commonwealth and federal revenue are going to be.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wharton. You got any comments?
I have nothing that on that piece. Mr. Warren, I've been back and forth making sure that everything's lined up, and I'm happy to, with that progress, we're communicating well. And really, this is just an update based on the odd process. You know, our state budget took this year with several updates and changes. This is just finalizing that process.
Okay. Um. Any questions, board members? All right, we'll open the public hearing on this amendment to the county budget. But I'm trying, I think I say this right. Being it's more than a 1% increase is why we have to have a public hearing on, on this amended budget.
Correct. More than 1% of total budget expenditures. Yes, sir.
So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this amendment to the 2324 county budget? Am I correct in saying 723,000?
The total, the total impact is actually going to be $594,499 to the county's GL.
Okay. So anybody wishing to speak for or against, please come up, state your name and address. Hang on, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. All right, gentlemen, what's the closing of the board?
I'm trying to get back to the right sheet there. So we've got a actual.
Where's the resolution?
Thank you. That's the word also. Thank you. Resolution. Yeah. So I would make, I'll make a motion that we approve the resol, the resolution as presented in the packets to adopt the budget amendment for fiscal year 2023-2024 to the school's operating funds for a total amount of $594,499.
Thank you, Mr. Eason. Motion on the floor with the resolution to add 594,499 to the general fund for expenditure for the school. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all for moving that up. Okay, that one, please. All right. Mr. Harvard, you want to help me with this? We have some I'm going to say monumental retirements.
Yes, sir. I think, I think two of them are here tonight. We've got plaques for individuals. I think the first one is going to be John, please. As everybody knows, Mr. Wyatt is wrapping up his term. Those of us who have served on these boards understand the thankless hours and days that you put in it, and you know things that, he knows things that the general public doesn't have access to. He's going to make decisions. Board supervisor members make decisions based on the information they have that other folks don't, and it's a withering criticism. Way, way, way too often. So John, we've got a plaque here that thank you, the board, thank you for your service. Me, County Board Supervisor, presented Sean Wyatt 2020-2023, an appreciation of four years of service to the citizens of Amelia County. And we do, as a, as a staff, we appreciate it as much more than the board does. So Mr. Wyatt and board members, if y'all could gather and present Mr. Wyatt and maybe give Wayne a chance to get a picture. Get one more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Every, we got one more attendee here tonight that is retiring at the end of the month. This person has got 50 years of service in Amelia County in the Social Services Department. She continued to work in Amelia County when Richard Nixon was president. And there, there are a whole bunch of other things that we could say were going on then, but it's been a long time. It's been dedicated service. There was, there were more than a decade when I was serving on the board and Martha was part of Social Services. And I teased the other day at the Social Services luncheon that they had for them, that we were like the married couple because we were always fussing about money. She was saying, I've got a habit for services, and I was sitting up there and we were saying, no, you don't need that. But we survived. We had, we wanted to honor her, and she said she only wanted one thing, if we could do it. She would like to have a crate myrtle put in front of the Social Services building. It looks very Soviet, like it is, very industrial. And Daryl golfed yesterday, planted two crate myrtles for on the side of the sidewalk for Martha, so we'll always have a piece over here. Yes, and we've got a, so we've got a plaque for Martha as well. Presented to Martha Bullen, December 10th, 1973. December 31st, 2023, appreciating the 50 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Amelia County. So just, if you would get with the board members the same way, I think, have a, have a few photographs.
Sixteen years old. I appreciate that.
If y'all could stay right there for a second. Mr. Wilkinson is here. He's the chairman of the advisory board. If he could come up and be a part of that center as well. He's a chairman of the Social Services Advisory Board. Mr. Wilkinson, if you could get up there.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and the privilege of, for serving the county for the past 50 years. It really has been my privilege, and if my husband was a public speaker, he would say thank you to the county for keeping me out of his hair. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's only a minute and a half. You know, first acknowledging the Board of Supervisors, the county staff, citizens, and friends of Amelia. I, Stanley Wilkinson, Chair of the Social Services Advisory Board, would like to publicly thank Ms. Martha Pulliam for an extraordinary run of fifty years' service to the Social Service Department. While engaging with you in our meetings, I found you to be a true professional. Your reports always showed that your diligence, your hard work, your dedication, and leadership qualities. You will leave an indelible footprint that cannot be replaced. Yes, the position will be filled, but you cannot be replaced. Again, thank you, Martha, and may your next chapter of your life be filled with peace, joy, happiness, and many miles of cycling.
There's, there's one more plaque right here that we'll let her walk out of the room with, but this is what's going to be placed on the tree. Planned in honor of Martha M. Pullen, December tenth, nineteen seventy-three to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. For fifty years of dedicated selfless service and for the lives that you've touched in our beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it in here, we're ready. We also have three more plaques, but those folks live out of town and they're not here, so we will get them to, to those folks. Conder Hicks, she has thirty-four years in social services. She's retiring at the end of the year. And Ms. Chalkley has got eighteen. She's gone as well. But thank you all.
Thank y'all.
Those, those two, Martha here.
Oh. I said three more.
I probably.
Yeah, that's fine. I just mentioned, I just make sure everybody got mentioned.
There's Sheriff's Office, who remained there to retire, is next one.
All right, gentlemen. While we're honoring people that have served the county, why don't we bump, bump up the first responders donation? Carter, you go take care of that?
Looking for my people here. I actually have three checks from Building Hope. We, I'm like a little worker bee for Building Hope. I help them out from time to time and what a great organization. Looking forward, this, this certain thing that we did was to put yard signs out all around Amelia and sell signs to raise money so we could give a little something back to our services. The yard signs are out there around Amelia, so when the services roll by them, that being the Amelia Rescue Squad or the Fire Department or the Sheriff's Department can see that we appreciate them and their service to our community. And so much can be said for the Fire Department, which is completely volunteer, the Rescue Squad and our Sheriff's Department. And being on the outskirts of being a first responder myself, retired, there is a lot that goes on with that. And there's a lot that they shoulder for us as a community. And being in such a small community, these individuals are out there at night, during the day, in the cold, in the rain, in the snow, and everything else that you can think of, risking themselves to help us in our community. And they have to shoulder a lot. They see a lot, they deal with a lot that the regular citizens may not know. And a lot of stuff goes on, you know, behind the scenes and the backgrounds that the general public just doesn't know. And that, and that's fine, because I think that what's important are these people that get paid to do a job. And then people volunteer to do a job to carry that weight. So the citizens of our county can lay down at night and rest assured that someone is on watch. And whether that's the rescue or the Sheriff's Department or the Fire Department, there's somebody there to watch over the people as they sleep, as they're at work, as their children, at their school. And I just can't say enough about first responders and Sean being the first responders, I think for twenty years of service, volunteer service. And I just think that's awesome. And David as well, I think you just told me, what, twenty-eight years? What did you say?
Twenty-eight years career.
Twenty-eight years.
Thirty-five years of the thing.
Thirty-five years here in Amelia. And guys, that's public service. And that's public service right here in our community. And I think a lot of times, you know, we're busy working and doing different things. We don't recognize them as much as maybe we should. So anyway, through Building Hope, we were able to sell these and we were able to come up with some checks. So I would like, I don't know who I actually have here. I've seen the sheriff around here somewhere. Mr. Walker? Ah, there he is. All right. And I would like to give you this check, sir, and tell you thank you, department. And we hope that that will go to a very good cause. Maybe a good meal for you guys, for break your shifts. And thank you so much for everything you do, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, brother. And we also have one here for the Amelia Emergency Squad. And this guy right here, I, I got to tell y'all guys, in case some of you don't know him, this guy's a superstar. And, you know, I had the chance, you know, I don't know everybody in Amelia County, right? And we met up at the store up there, at the restaurant, and I guess we just, you know, we, we talked and talked about different things. And I was so proud of just hearing his story and the service that he has provided to this county just himself. It's just amazing. So again, if you just take a moment and, you know, you don't know what these guys are doing in our, in our community, you just take a moment. You know, you learn so much about the people that walk amongst you that, that provide such a great service. And they don't do it for the money, guys. But anyway, we're going to provide you with this check. And we hope that it can go towards something that the Rescue Squad that you guys could use, whether it's dinner or whatever else. And we appreciate all of it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, our complete volunteer guys right here. I don't know this guy. What's your name?
Matthew Zuman.
Matthew Zuman. I, I think Sean told me about you there. Anyway, these guys are completely volunteering, completely volunteer, rain, snow, any sort of inclement weather, accidents unfortunately that we have in the county. Again, these guys are completely volunteer and we're so blessed to have you guys. And when you ride down the street and you see that sign, hopefully you know that as a community, we're thinking of you and we thank you for your service. And.
Thank y'all for supporting.
You got it? There you go. And uh, like I said, I'm just going to say a couple more words and I'm going to get after you guys. I'm not much of a public speaker, but Building Hope is a, it's a great thing for our community. And, you know, it, it, it helps build hope within the community. And we're hoping that, that in the future, that, that we can do more things. And I obviously will help out as much as I can. I pop in and pop out on Sean and the guys. But it's a good service to have in the community as well. Anyone can help out. Anyone can be a part of that community effort, whether it's through a nonprofit or whether it's just on your own. Like I do stuff on my own as well. So, you know, be active, take a step forward for your community and thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. All right, I think we can get back on track here. River Street, are they dialed up for us or?
I think Mr. Taylor is on there.
Andrew, can you hear me?
He is, sir.
Good evening. Uh, let me see if I can share my screen. Hold on a second. Are you able to see the screen there? Yes, sir. All right. So again, I'm Robert Taylor with River Street Networks. Just wanted to give you all an update on the fiber to the home build that we have going on. Uh, one thing that isn't in the slides, yesterday we were able to get submitted a VATTI twenty twenty-four application. On that application, we included Amelia County. We were able to get a support letter from Amelia County. Uh, there was no matching funds request from the county. Uh, this was a application in which River Street was providing thirty-five percent of the match and requesting the state to provide sixty-five percent of the match. If it does go through, we would build an additional twenty-six miles of fiber in the county, passing in another seven hundred and twenty-seven locations. That application for the county would be about two million dollars with one point three coming from VATTI and over seven hundred thousand coming from RSN. We would layer that into the project that we're going to talk about now, which is our VATTI twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three builds. One of the main items that I have on the docket that I need to discuss with you all tonight is that we're looking at a couple of properties that are owned by the county to use for electronic huts. That's where the data equipment would be stored and the fibers would be, be come in and be lit up with, with lasers to light the fiber for data services. Right here is an overview of the schedule. It, it's critical that we get the lease agreement started up. So once we can get the lease agreements, we can do the finalizing of any engineering as well as starting the staking and then also beginning the construction. So the two properties that we're talking about, the first one is in Amelia Courthouse. I have some follow-on maps and overviews of where those locations are. Uh, but the first one is the Amelia Courthouse. It's proposed location that's near the county property located near the courthouse itself. And the second one is in Manboro. It's located currently in an area near the convenience center. Here's the location that we're looking at in the courthouse. Um, I want to say this area here is the administrative building, so it's just back over here, just over from the wood line, back behind this building here. Um, it's a fifty by fifty parcel is what we're looking at. It would have a proposed fifteen-foot wide utility easement to allow us to bring power and communication wires into the building. And again, it'd be a twelve by twenty precast building. But here is a, a drawing of what the site would look like and where it would be located on the parcel. To give you an understanding, this facility would allow us to feed two hundred and nineteen miles of fiber throughout the county, passing about three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight locations with service. The next one that we're asking to look at getting a lease on is the Manboro Remote Site. This site is near the Manboro, um, uh, convenience center. Again, it's also a fifty by fifty parcel that would have a twelve by twenty precast concrete building. There would be a needs, a need for an easement, but I think we're looking at, are using an already existing easement there to get any power and or communications fibers into the, into the building there. Uh, this location would allow us to serve a hundred and seventeen miles of fiber, passing just over a thousand, thirty-four locations there. That's all I have. Are there any questions or any more details you all need me to provide? Would you like me to go back to any of those slides so you can look at them closer?
Buddy, got any questions?
I think a lot of it has to do with contracts we review here in a little bit. Get this rolling.
Any questions? No, I think we're good, sir. Thank you.
All right.
All right, that brings us to the supervisor activity and committee reports. Mr. Jones?
Uh, well, committee I've attended was the CRC this morning and it mostly retirement of several members of it. And other than that, it was not a lot of different new news. They're working on the same stuff that we've reported before and all. That's about it.
Mr. Wyatt?
We had a call meeting at the Heartland Regional, um, Heartland Regional Committee. It was a closed session working on something, on a big regional project. So things are looking good as far as I know on that. Not sure what we can or can't divulge yet, but I also had a radio system meeting. Same, everything was, it looks like it's still on pass, still looking at a expected date to turn on our system in the late fall of the winter of twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
There's a CPMT meeting. That's it as far as committee.
Okay. Mr. Easton?
Crossroads, again, kind of the, the main committee meeting. And significant thing with them is that a large uh, real estate transaction is, is proceeding. So a business next door to the, to the Crossroads Campus became available in Prince Edward, right inside four sixty there. And we are proceeding with buying that land and the two buildings that are on it. At this month's Board Supervisor Meeting for Prince Edward County, they approved the rezoning that was necessary for us to move forward with that purchase. So that's a multimillion dollar purchase, which will, which in the end is actually going to end up saving a good bit of money for Crossroads, going to allow consolidation of several existing other facilities around. So it's a, it's a lot we're, we're working through, but good, good, good stuff. And I know you all continue to get the monthly reports and see, you know, about several hundred people per month that take advantage of Crossroads Services and obviously not it. Obviously Amelia has one of the clinics and a group home here. So a lot of benefits to come.
Thank you.
While you're in Crossroads, Mr. Yop.
Yeah. I'll give you what you have.
Okay. Oh. I had a Piedmont Regional Dale meeting this afternoon. We had forty residents there last month. We got down to thirty, breaking cold weather. Made people act up a little bit. Had a couple EMS meetings. All right, that brings us to capital improvement plan update. Mr. Steel, you open?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the capital improvement plan process is underway for the FY twenty-five budget. As a part of that, we have been, you know, just making sure that county staff and the administration office and all the other department heads are all on the same page with the active CIP projects from FY twenty-four and from prior fiscal years that are still ongoing. Um, a document has been sent to you and I sent another updated document to you all that has the list of projects. Uh, that document should be a pretty good resource from this point forward as it has all the account numbers of their projects on there for you, the total expenditures, the appropriated budget and the remaining balance, and of course, a status update. If you all have any questions about any particular projects now, you can directly call Mr. World in the finance office and you have that account number and you can refer right to that account and Mr. World could give you all the expenditures for that account. So I hope that you guys feel free to reach out to me or him and we can also refer to the same page. I hope that'll be helpful. In terms of moving forward with the CIP for FY twenty-five, uh, on November twenty-eighth, the call letter was sent out. The board was included on that, as well as the planning commission and all the respective county department and. The board was included on that, um, as well as the planning commission and all the respective county department and departments and agencies. The CIP submissions will be due January tenth and the planning commission CIP committee will meet January thirtieth. That is an open public meeting. Everybody's welcome to come. At that meeting, all the respective department heads and agency representatives will present their CIP requests for the upcoming fiscal year and will also review requests that may be coming down the road in future fiscal years. Uh, with that being said, I'm definitely willing to answer any questions you may have on specific projects or the process in general.
What was the date you set for the presentation of those?
That'll be January thirtieth, which is, uh, I believe that's a Tuesday and that's ten A M. Confirm that. That's a Tuesday. Yep, Tuesday, the thirtieth at ten A M.
I'd like to look at making some changes in the process.
Okay.
Um, some things that I've been thinking about anyhow is if you go apply for a CIP project, you need to at least present one or two estimates. So we know we're working with real, real numbers. And a timeline of when you present it to when you start it, not when you finish it. Let's say you want a fifty thousand dollar CIP project to build a wall. Don't want to just sit there for two or three years and do nothing with it, so. I was looking at twelve months to get something moving. If you don't do it in twelve months, we take it off. Go to something else. Instead of having money just sitting there all the time doing nothing, or we could do something else with it.
Okay. After, um, I've settled the CIP committee for quite some time. There is a fifteen thousand dollar limit to what could, what what can come into a project. It's gotta be fifteen thousand dollars before we can come into a CIP project.
Oh.
Over the years, I have seen some that that were more or less a shot in the dark. Maybe some estimates would help. Mr. Board. Our, our CIP is, is about as long as our county budget. A lot of stuff in there.
Well, I agree with Mr. Robinson or whatever, that, uh, it should be a limit on it so the money don't stay in limbo. Like he said, we could use it on other projects that if the need comes up.
I'm very in favor of that part as well. I, I think they, too many of them hang out far, far too long. I, I don't have any disagreement with that. I I have a harder time with the, the, at the budget, I'm sorry, the estimates upfront. I don't disagree with you on that either. It's the practicality of some of them. Whether they, whether they can get estimates depending on what the, what the thing is. And how much effort, you know, we want town, all counts, county departments to put into things that they may not even then we agree with moving forward on, um. So I, I'm not disagreeing. I think it's just what, how do you get into logistics and some of the processes there?
What a what a limit, say a project. I'm just throwing numbers out there, fifty thousand or seventy five thousand. Maybe get an estimate on something like that, but.
What I'm looking to do is quick is not to tie money up. Say you've got, I come in, I want a hundred thousand dollar project and it ended up costing fifty thousand. Well, I just tied up a hundred thousand, I mean fifty thousand. Could be for two or three years till that project was completed. But we could have spent it somewhere else to where it was needed. So at least come up with a at least one estimate of a real number. We're not gonna hold you to it. Because I mean, things change. Just because you bring it in here today doesn't mean it's gonna be that three weeks from now. But at least make sure we're in the ballpark. Tighten that excess up.
Yeah, again, I'm not disagreeing. I don't know that I've seen I've seen ones though where I feel like they didn't have even a ballpark estimate on it. I'm not disagreeing. Again, I'm not disagreeing with that, like.
There, there has been a few. And, I mean, there's been a couple that have drug on since they were on CIP before I got on the board. And they're still dragging on now and they're not, they're not a big number.
I'm not disagreeing with the dragging on. You know, is it because they don't have es- is it because they don't have estimates or are there other factors going?
I think it just sat there too long before they decided to move on with it. See, let's I, let's move on with it. Let's not just let it sit here and sit here and sit here. If you need it, that's fine. Let's do it. If you don't do it in twelve months, we're gonna take it back and we're gonna give it to somebody else that it's ready to roll. Instead of having money just sitting here just to be sitting here, because we don't have a lot of extra money sitting around. Let's take care of where we need to go with it.
The money needs to be working, not sitting that out.
Yeah.
It has to work. And that's what it's all to work with. And this newer knows no good being idle.
Well, we could take, I mean, and I think that's, we can remember, we can take stuff off the CIP. It's not like once it's approved, it stays for forever. Uh, we can take, and we have taken some off in, in my four years, um. Not necessarily because they're idle, but you know, again, the point is we can take them off. I don't, I don't think any of us probably disagree. I'm looking at faces and not against it. I think we're all thinking it's unnecessary sometimes.
Some projects run under. Do you have a, you know, you have a balance? Thank you. I think the point of the CIP project is to get as many of these projects done. So when you do go under on one project, then why don't you go back there and be ready? Nobody says we can't adjust this CIP process during the year. I mean, once a project comes off, say it has some money left over, we look down a list and grab one that that money would take care of.
Well, that's another thing we need to make sure. When that project is done, there's leftover money and needs to roll back into the CIP. Let's just go with it instead of just sitting there. Move it back, make it available and let's do something else with it.
She's dirty dates, I mean.
Yeah.
Started a couple of years ago and, and we had a big meeting and revamped and now that the CIP committee sends them to us with the power, they prioritize based on project need rather than money. Um, which I, I feel that that does work better, but, um, maybe you can add a component of expected time, expected start, expected completion, expected, you know, and what we had sold for is like, um, um, Public Works does a lot of the stuff, for example. So they, you know, Parks and Rec may have one, Fire may have one, Sheriff's Office, they can't do but so much. So some of those projects get rolled. So, so maybe not only prioritize them by with, with their side, with the immediate need, but get the departments to set a timeline, you know, we'd like to have this done by here, here and we could line them, you can line them up that way as well. And then if you look six months to here from now, you're supposed to start in March. They didn't start it.
And you hadn't started.
Right, you know.
Is there any interest in possibly putting some type of, if it reaches this level, we need some type of a couple of estimates to make sure we're in the ballpark? And.
I would think so with some higher end ones, yeah. But you got to determine where that, that level is. I mean, I would do it on any of it. That's just the way I would do it. I mean, I don't go by anything without knowing how much it costs me. I'm not signing a blank check. I'm not just saying, give it to me. So I mean, I feel like even though this is government, you still should run it responsibly. So if I'm asking for money for a project, I should know what it's going to cost within reason and have something to back it up. I mean, it doesn't hurt to phone call.
Doesn't. Seventy five, you think over seventy five thousand would need a estimate or do you want to go lower? Fifty.
That's a, yeah, fifty, I can deal with fifty.
And you want to make, possibly make a change if, if it's not having a start date, I mean, possible completion date. And just get a better handle on getting the projects done, don't let them sit there.
Yeah, get them moving in a year, you know, at least we're chugging on, go to the next one.
Many things get to start because they could run into some issues.
Everything runs.
Look, let's get it started.
Mr. Deal, that's, this is more or less a process change. I don't know if this really needs a vote. Process change that would hurt.
I can follow up on the call letter email and just notify everybody that anything over fifty thousand must be accompanied by an estimate. And then in terms of afterwards, projects that are approved, that they'll need to start it within a certain time. Did you guys decide what you wanted? And I guess is that a per project basis? How, how are you guys, the standard start?
Well, you need to decide whether we could do a, get started in twelve months or whether we could do a projection. Start, complete.
We start, we start off doing, starting in twelve months. Because we do know how things can drag on.
Okay, we love to have some more COVID.
Out of hands, it's out of our hands. Um. Since we're adding a few other things to the process, to me it would seem fit and maybe give the departments another couple of weeks to do stuff. Is that, how, how's that gonna affect our timeline to when we got approved?
So, uh, we could definitely give them a little more time. Right now, I sort of worked some time. I, I have asked for their, so I sent the letter November twenty eighth. I asked for their submission to January tenth. So that's about six weeks of time for them to prepare it. But the meeting, the CIP committee meeting is not until January thirtieth. So, and I, I can pull everything together pretty much the day before the meeting. So that pushes somebody back on a project. In that regard, I still think we can meet our meeting date schedule and just, they just know that they have twenty days following the due date to pull something together if they need to. So that's almost another three weeks that they would have based on the schedule we currently have. So I don't know if we need to amend the schedules, but just know that if there's something on the firm due date that you don't have together, then just let me know and.
Little bit.
Yeah, we can be a little flexible this year because this is short notice.
Yeah.
What is, everybody agreement to that, just a little process change?
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Mr.?
So if, yes, once CIP even on process change. So I mean, it's just been taking that and specifically looking at the current. So we've got only three, or four total that are marked on hold. Um, and I can give an update on those if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
So the Kendall Building, I believe that one, I think is probably going to be next from the list, um, as it stands. Just the, uh, right now where we're at, I think the three hundred thousand that was there was to begin the preparation of the building for renovation. And I know the Wells Fargo project took precedence there in terms of renovating the building and that project's been a little bit more than I think was originally anticipated. But of course that's, um, so there's been no movement on that project staff wise. No one's doing anything with that project. That one is a true on hold project.
The, the board supervisors placed that on hold.
Yes, and that was the board's direction. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And I think that all this, making sure the public knows sort of around the Wells Fargo and everything that was else was going on at the time. And the lack of a true, I think, maybe direction there, but that was a little bit before my time. Uh, the other projects, we have the, um, War Memorial Building Evaluation. The War Memorial Building is receiving, um, some, actually some upgrades as you'll see in the Parks and Rec gym upgrades. So that is receiving some upgrades. I think that project was really to evaluate its what needed to be done to make it a more useful space and or what may need to be done in the future to actually build a new Parks and Rec building. I think was a combination there. That's been put on hold and instead you have the Parks and Rec gym upgrades, which is going ahead and attacking some of those, um, needs like adding new volleyball sleeves, relining the courts. That way you don't just have one team practicing at a time, but you could actually have two teams practicing or multiple teams at a time using that space better per hour. So that project, that might get dropped as well because there's an upgrade project that's sort of doing what would have been evaluated basically with it.
Well, I think this is.
And that's only forty five thousand, so it's not really a large project.
No, but I think it speaks well to Todd's point. I mean, this is from fiscal year twenty two, so it's multiple years old sitting, doing, doing nothing. And Bepel Building is now on four, four fiscal year cycles. Sitting doing, doing nothing.
Based on my conversation with, uh.
I agree with you.
Yep.
Rolled on with something else.
Based on my conversation with Mr. Golf, the Bepel Building is actually, and this is a new update, it has a pretty much today. They are going to begin some roofing repairs on that building within thirty to sixty days. The, the issue with the Bepel Building is there's really a shifting of county staff from building to building. And that building improvements was going to be done in line with that shift. And so the Circuit Court Clerk's Office getting to the Wells Fargo Building was really step one. And then down the road, there's potential other shifts with the Registrar's Office moving somewhere. And that's all sort of relying on some other buildings that, and some things that haven't been figured out yet. So I think that's why that one's been on hold, but he's going to go ahead. The roof needs some repairs and he's going to go ahead and start working on the roofing repairs and using that line for improvements on that Bepel Building. Um, so that project should be started and now it's based on our conversation.
I mean, was roofing part of the original? I mean, we can't just use roofing.
I, I wasn't here three years ago, so I'm not going to speak exactly what was included at the time, but I would say that the general improvements were to make it. I know that the building has had issues. I think it was to make it a more sure building and then also to do some interior renovation.
Thought it was all interior, but, um, I think we need to go back and look at what was actually the, the project itself that was approved. And see if it included roofing.
Yeah. Well, the roof is leaking, so I guess he'll, either way, he'll have to come back to you guys and need some sort of immediate decision on you guys on that. Um, lastly is the wastewater treatment plant, U V upgrade. That project's been on hold, but there's a couple of the items that need to be completed before that project can commence. The program, programmable logic controller, which is the computer brain for the treatment plant has not been replaced. It's in the process. They're working on that, so they're manually operating everything. They don't have the brain. Once they get the brain and complete the I N I study, which is another project, they can do the U V update. So it's another project that's just sort of waiting on those factors. So of the four, one of them, the board has put on hold of the three, um, one of them is pretty much being addressed, the War Memorial Building Evaluation with the upgrade, so that one can be nixed. And then of the remaining two, the Bepel Building, I'd say is the one of most concerned due to the number of years it's been on there. I think we have a good grasp though. We've made a lot of progress. I know Josh and I came on at my first meeting with you all was December of last year. So I came on about this time last year. I know Josh came on shortly before me. I definitely feel like me and him are on a lot better grounding this year in terms of having an idea of where everything's at and what the projects even are. I didn't even know what half of this stuff was last year when I came on, what it meant. So I think we're in a good position and definitely at a place where we can really move forward, clean this account up, get projects done and get things, get things straight. But please let us know any insight that you have and how you would like us to proceed.
Okay, I do think it's, I do, I agree with you that it's improved and I think the, getting this report out, you know, you and I talked about this already, getting this report to us. What did we end up signing, talk around the phone every two mon- I think we kind of went on like. Yeah, true, every two months, I think is probably one of the biggest factors in helping with your speed issue to just the visit, frankly, just the visibility.
Or accountability.
Yeah, um. Yeah. I've heard also there was some discussion between Parks and Rec and the schools. I've heard also there was some discussion between Parks and Rec and the schools about the schools needing to contribute funds for part of part one of the, one or more of the Parks and Rec items on here. Does that ring a bell?
I have generally heard that they have in the past, I don't know if they've shared costs, but I, I can't speak to that really because I'm not familiar with their, you know, their, their projects that intimately.
We, we can go back and find it. I, I think, I guess Darryl and Glenn were talking about it last week. There was a project or plan that was adopted by Parks and Rec and the schools that was gonna take about ten years for implementation. They were gonna do these series of upgrades in spaces that both groups used. And it was to be split, the money was to be split fifty fifty. Unfortunately, we had some staff turnover. And I, I think the, I think it's mostly with the, the school in. Nobody ever explained, they didn't have an idea that, that that's what the arrangement was.
Yeah.
And it came to light, I guess we were getting ready to buy some scoreboards and do a scoreboard project. And Glenn was asking, uh, Mr. Trump for half of the money for making sure that they had their half of the money ready. And he didn't know anything about it. So I think there's been some education done in the past couple of months to, to resurrect that plan and make sure that everybody knows it so they can get it in their budgets going forward.
Yeah, but I think there's gonna have to be a lot more. I, I don't think it is resolved. I don't think it is resolved. I'm very confident. I speak to the schools, it's not. Um, so for example, it doesn't make sense to them that the Parks and Rec portion would be included in the C I P, so their half would be included in a C I P, but then the half that's expected from the schools would be expected to come out of their, their general operating fund. They're like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna fund it through C I P, then it seems like it should just be, you know, it's covered for C I P. If Parks and Rec's getting extra money for it, the same thing that, then was one group not covering it through their own, their regular budget, but the other group's expected to cover it through their regular budget. Um. I think that just as an agreement from years ago and none of the same people are around is no longer an agreement. It's it's, they're gonna have to start all, they're gonna have to start over and come up with a new agreement or plan. It's just, there's nobody left in the schools that agreed to it. And as you said, it wasn't, it's not in, it's not baked into anything, so.
I, I, to your point, I think I remember some in the C I P that the school put C I P in.
They did, and if theirs are in, then they're good, they're good with that. But it's exact, it's exactly what Taylor's saying. Glenn went to the schools and said, where's your, where's your mon, money for scoreboard and things like that, that Glenn's got in C I P, which is fine. But no one in the schools even knew to budget for it, period. But even if they are gonna budget for it, why would they budget for something that one part of the county puts in C I P and then expect them to get it out of the, the regular funding? They can't, they don't have that much, they don't have that kind of room to absorb it any better than Parks and Rec.
Really, rather proves Todd's point. It was that long ago. Because I know this is still a great doing. It's over four years old.
Right, it's, yeah, it's.
It's over four years. Yeah, I mean, at, at the moment.
This would eliminate a lot of this.
Yeah, to, to your point, exactly.
They wouldn't have to remember back that far if you just moved forward.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, well, because the bleacher one listed on here, while it's in progress, which is good, it's from F Y twenty-one. And it's only a little under, about half spent thus far, which is good that it's moving along, but you're only seeing it half done in, in four years. So I think that's the kind of one we have to watch too then, because while it would meet that criteria of it, perhaps assuming it started within twelve months. You still, you don't wanna drag it on forever.
Nope.
Okay, anyway, that addressed all my questions.
Something I'm trying to. I'm figuring it out. I was suggesting the Parks and Rec schools get together and if, if there's a project that both of them will both of them put it in the C I P, both of them funded that, I think, I think they need to, I don't think we need to be involved on how they split hairs. They'll figure it out and get the break and go from there.
Completely, right. Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a rumor of the library and Darryl or something makes some funds for a playground, playground. You know that? Something about the.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's good.
Great, work it out.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, the fact you bring up the great visibility helps everything. Thank you, thank you both.
I think my, my last question, that's a, if, like, let's say, like, that, using that example you just brought up potentially with the pending project that they're discussing library and public works, and I do not believe the library's board of trustees has met on this, so be careful here, how much we talk about it, but the, would the board want that to be brought back for like an official reappropriation and changing the lines?
I think it should be.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, they, they hashed it out, because I mean, you don't wanna just give out, you asked for money for this project and then you knowingly you could change it, not saying you would, but you could, and then do your own thing. But I think it still should bring it back to the board just to.
I agree with you because you're not just approving an amount, you're approving a project, like it's for this.
Particular product.
Yes, for this thing, yeah. Which is my same, obviously, I'm not, not saying don't fix the roof on the Beppel Building, you know? But I think it's worth going back to that project, you know, with that kind of thing included in that, in that project. We have paperwork somewhere, you know, back from that. Was it included? Because if it wasn't, then I don't think we could, I don't think we can or should use that line for it, you know, without further approval or discussion, just keeping ourselves honest with, with the tracking, et cetera. And then, then I'll tell you, I would have a conceptual problem personally about whether I think roof repairs are really C I P. You know, or are they, because we had, we've had this discussion the last kind of budget decisions, too, of like re, repairs in general, you know, stuff, there, there's a degree. I'm not, I'm not saying this is or isn't, it's a line that we haven't figured out yet. Somewhere there's a, there's a line of going, you do a certain amount of maintenance, a general upkeep and things. Where is it that it becomes C I P versus standard? We haven't found that exact line yet.
And in this specific case, I believe it's gonna be a full replacement because the roof's like twenty years old. And so I think the issues by the time they get in there, but Darryl can speak to that a lot more, as I think his guys have seen it. Lastly, I think the biggest thing that, you know, I'm, I'm learning after being here this year is, you know, and what I'm gonna try to do this next year is just to really go see the projects, be that internal facilitator even more so between everybody. I think, I think what happens, happens is everybody's very busy. We have a, uh, staff that works hard, a lean staff, but everybody's in their own lanes. And so the communication, I think sometimes is what falls into practice between each person. So I'm definitely gonna try to be more of the communication facilitator there between the people and make sure everybody's on the same page.
I'm gonna say it for you.
Yep. But you can, I can improve there.
And that would help, I think that would help. I appreciate that.
So you the ones gonna go in and start turning the screws on, like, tightening up?
I can't drive, push no, I'm getting you a big screwdriver.
So you can twist it on, say, we gotta turn the screws up on this thing. Now, like on your top seven items?
Yes.
So it's six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Almost six ninety-one. So that's rolling back into the C I P for this year. How long's it gonna be sitting here tied up?
I don't.
In these things that are done.
To that, I don't know if it's technically like tied up.
I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
The seven items up top that are completely, you have a balance sitting there, whether they're negative or positive.
Yeah.
So how long before that money rolls back in so that they're gone? They're just disappeared? That money rolls back into all available funds?
Well, on paper, it won't happen until our final audit comes back. Right now, no, nothing's being expensed, uh, against it, so none of that is being, none of those figures are being drawn down from the cash balance in the C I P. So on paper, it'll likely be in January. If, you won't see that on the paper anymore, on the actual G O anymore. And right now, nothing's being expensed against it. And the six ninety, so the six ninety that.
Yeah, the big one is the.
Is remaining after those completed projects. There's like seven projects that are completed, the six ninety. I think Todd's wondering if that, how does that work with our fu, funding? I mean, it's sort of, I think it's all computer wise, you can speak to that. Well, yeah. Where it would technically be. So based on how the current resolution or the resolution that was passed with that piece in it, technically it's money that is just hanging out there. The way the resolution read is any kind of balance up to you guys can be transferred, can be taken back, can be put towards a different project. So it's there, but it's not designated for anything at that point.
But we need to leave a little bit in there for a rainy day emergency, just like this roof just started leaking.
Like a reserve account? Yeah.
Yeah, we need to leave a certain portion of it there because you don't know when a roof's gonna leak. And it, it happens.
Yeah.
You know, and just like if this, if this roof wasn't on their list four years ago on this, uh, the building, uh, they waited four years on a roof that's leaking, they screwed up.
Yeah.
They screwed up.
Agreed, agreed, yeah.
It'll cost fortune to fix it. If it started leaking last week on some of these big storms they had, well, you better get in there and get it fixed.
Hope you got some buckets.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen. Brad, you got enough to make the changes in the process and?
I think we're gonna go.
All right, we'll move on then. Ms. Worsham, wanna speak to the food pantry?
All right, I was getting a little sleepy there. I gotta wake up. All right. So, um, good evening to everybody. Um, well.
PowerPoint show, Ashley.
Oh, okay, so I can go ahead and talk. Um, so I count it a privilege and an honor to be standing here tonight. Um, I have to say God has a sense of humor because, um, I'm standing in this position as administrator for the Amelia County Food Pantry as well as being here at this meeting tonight to be an advocate for the Amelia County, um, food pantry. Would God press this to that?
When I turn it over, they can just press the error button, back and forth.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Um, so, um, just a, a little story of just even thinking of me being in Columbus, Ohio for seventeen plus years. And then, um, I said with the pandemic, it was a blessing in disguise because it was time for me to relocate back here to help with, um, my parents knowing that they're elderly. And, um, then it was also a career change. I was their early childhood mental health consultant there, um, at the Children's Hospital. And was able to gain a lot of experience, community relation liaison, all those different things to be able to come back and do what I'm doing now at the, um, Amelia County Food Pantry. And so, um, I'm here on today because I wanna take you on a little journey. Um, a lot of you may not be aware, since I've taken over, um, one of my biggest thing was to make sure everybody's aware of how the pantry got started, um, where we are, where we're wanting to go. And so, um, we can go ahead and start, um. Okay, so we said Amelia County Food Pantry, and it says no one in, for our, um, motto is no one in Amelia County will go hungry. And, um, some of you may be saying, how did we get our start? But before that, I wanna show you, if you can just take a minute, it says child hunger is in every Virginia community. And unfortunately, what we're learning is that it's only getting harder for families to afford food. The tough reality is we all have a neighbor, a colleague, or a friend struggling to buy groceries and also pay their bills. No parent should have to make those impossible decisions. And one of my things is a lot of times you find people, they don't really become an advocate or start to donate or contribute until it actually hits home. And I was like, I wanna encourage people to be proactive, not waiting until it hits us or hits our family, but to know that we all could be one paycheck away from having food. We are, um, so like I said, let me tell you a little bit about, um, my father returned back here. He was in the military for twenty-six plus years, I think it was. And while living in Panama, that's where he saw children eating out of the trash cans. And that's what, when he moved back here, he saw that there was a need of people, um, with food insecurity. And so decided, um, he started a church, but then he also started the food pantry. And, um, they started with humble beginnings. He and my mother, they would go to the food bank because we're connected under Feed More. It used to, um, it wasn't always called Feed More, they just changed the names a couple of years ago. But they would go down there, take their cars and get the food and bring it back. Um, he will also go in his pocket to pay for the food when they weren't getting any of the, the donations. And so, um, as years went on, now we're at thirty plus years that the Amelia County Food Pantry has been in operation. Can y'all give it up just a little bit for that thing? Thanks, thank you. So, um, in between, you're gonna see little pictures of what we have going on there. Um, this is that section we tell you a lot of times that goes very quickly, our dry goods. Um, but also, as you see, like I said, my dad was the founder, the director. My mother, Alice Worsham, she is the assistant director. And they have now made me the administrator since I've moved back because they are elderly now and they need somebody else to take it under. And, um, I'm trying to give it some wings to help it to fly. Um, hopefully you guys got to see our video, um, on YouTube that Anita Williamson did, telling the history and some stories about the, the food pantry. That's us at, um, a, an event. That's been something that we had not been doing, but we're being more visible in the community and involved. We were at the Juneteenth event. Um, so under my position, I am right now currently overseeing operations, marketing, and finances. Can you say that's a lot? Yes, it is. Um, and my administrative duties, as you see, majority of it is with the daily operations of things. And then the next part is, uh, with the marketing and then a small part with the finances. Um, here's just a few of our, our volunteers in between. That's, um, the fair that gave us the donation. That's again summer food. This is what you get to see. This is on a day-to-day basis. We're open three days a week. But we're there and I'm there pretty much, I am there every day and sometimes one day on the weekend. Mondays is, this is one of our Mondays where we get a big pickup from the Walmart in Powhatan, and that's where it kind of helps set our week, where we get everything sorted. But you see all that produce, all those things that we have to lift and go put it in the cooler and sort it out and get ready to serve our clients through the week. Um, under the operations, here are just some of the, the duties that I have to do under operations. Again, like I told you, you see that it is, you see all those bullet points. It's, it's a lot of things, making sure the building is conducive, making sure the van is running to go do the pickups, all those, uh, overseeing volunteers. There's nine volunteers that I consistently have to manage and make sure we have coverage, and then also recruiting additional ones. This is our, um, regional representative from Feed More. We have to also do, um, making sure we do reports, weekly reports of, um, things to report to Feed More. That's when we had to do our yearly inspection to make sure we're functioning like we should. So you know that we're really legit. Um, this is again some of our volunteers. Under marketing, you see, one of my goals for next year is to make sure we're getting a, um, a webpage because we currently have, uh, just our Facebook page that's keeping people informed. We also got our new sign, which has been awesome. Everybody's rate reviews. They can find us now. And we've had people pass and buy that said, I just saw the sign and wanted to call and to donate, which has been a blessing. There we have it. Surely they did, okay. Um, again, that's, um, some of our volunteers. Like I said, uh, with the finances is basically, um, with our, making sure our van stays with, with gas in it, postage, all those different things with our finances. This is where we get sometimes dog and cat food donated. This is where we get sometimes dog and cat food donated. So moving along, again, back to that quote earlier, wanted you to see where according to a new survey founding released by No Kid Go Hungry, fifty-eight percent of middle-income households reported experiencing food insecurity over the last year. And of those, ninety-five percent reported struggling to afford enough food for their children at least monthly. So um, and to see the food prices have rose nine point five percent. So basically what this is all saying is even middle-class families are struggling with food. Some of them now are skipping a meal because the pricing of food is going up. And we're seeing that with some of the families. It's not just those that are in poverty now that are coming to us. These are actually some middle-class families saying, I'm falling upon hard times right now. So I wanted to show you how our numbers are, the numbers of families that we are um currently servicing. We went back from um two thousand when the pandemic started and they quickly were able to turn it into um where they would do a line where they couldn't come in anymore to get food, but they would um be in the, in the car, stay in the car and they would take the boxes, make the boxes and take it out to them. However, you see, the numbers started to dip a little bit in twenty twenty-one. And um, the reason being is we had some other churches and other different places that were trying to do food pantries. And so some of the clients, they start going there, but those places were not sustainable. So you see in twenty twenty-two, they started coming back to us. And then you see in twenty twenty-three, the number you see is the highest up there of the families that we are servicing currently. And this just went to November and we're in December and we already just had eight families add on just this month. I'm not sure how many individuals that equate, but again, that's eight clients that we're um adding on to that number. So as you see in Amelia County, and this was from the um Census Bureau, US Census Bureau, uh as of July twenty twenty-two, we had, it's um nine percent. Sorry, my, my slide. Of poverty here in Amelia County. So if that was twenty twenty-two, imagine where we are now, twenty twenty-three. But let's go back to what I just said about we have middle-class family now. So it's not just those that are in poverty. So you may be wondering, um, we currently operate under the church's five oh one C. And um, some may say, why didn't you go nonprofit? The reason being is my father's desire was that no one in Amelia County goes hungry. If you develop a board, a board is gonna tell you, this is how you have to do it. They gotta do this. If you come to us and you're in need of food, they report their um, their income to us. According to Feed More, we're not allowed to ask them a, a whole bunch of questions, but they, they have been honest about their annual income for the um TFA program, which is temporary um food assistance. When we do that, the second Tuesday of the month, they do have to qualify for that based on income. We have a chart that we have to go by whether they can apply. But the food pantry, if you do not have any food, we're there to help support you with the food. We're also able to service, um if you live in a surrounding county and you're just in need, we only can service you one time, then we have to refer you to a food pantry within your area. So um, that's how that works with that. And then we function by donations only. Sometimes we're able to get certain grants. Um, Feed More has really been helpful in helping us with getting freezers. There, there's so many pieces and parts to it. Um, but I wanted to just show you of the donations that we have received, like a breakdown of where it's been going to. And as you see for the food purchase, sometimes we have to go to um Food Lion, not sometimes, a lot. I was just there Monday. Food Lion and Walmart, places like that to be able to purchase food. Sometimes we're able to get it from Feed More. Uh, we have fees that we have to pay for such as um our mailbox. We have a P O box that we, we have to pay for. When we go to these events, Amelia Day, stuff like that, we have to pay a vendor fee. We have repairs. We've had, uh, we got a new door installed. Our door had broke. We had to get, the roof was leaking. Y'all talking about leaking roof? We had one and we had to get that fixed. Um, there are up in other repairs that have needed to be done. Then with the utilities, um, the church has been helpful with sometimes giving us grace. But as we get donations, then we'll have to pay for the lights. We have to pay for the heat. Um, that during the um summertime, the air conditioning, the, the electricity, things like that. Gas for the van. Look how much is like a thousand and something for the gas for, for the vans because they have to go um to Food Lion, I think it's four days a week to pick up from there. Then they also have to go to Dollar General and pick up, McDonald's and pick up. Volunteers, a lunch and incentives. Y'all may see that, we had to put that a little high because we want to keep volunteers. Volunteers have been hard. We get a lot of females, but not a lot of males and not, not a lot of manpower. So we try to do things like we just um Christmas, um had a little Christmas party for them, try to provide lunch for them because they're there doing a lot of lifting and a lot of working. Supplies, that's things like um if it's uh envelopes to mail the cards, it could be computer pa- copy and paper, office supplies, type of, type of things, rugs, whatever, chairs, all that. Um, van repairs, then we have volunteer compensation. That's where y'all probably say a question mark. Again, with volunteers, we've actually had to give them just a little something compensation to keep volunteers to actually, we have one that definitely goes with my dad all the time, pretty much every day to do um the pickups. Then we have some volunteers that are there to help me on Mondays, to help on um other days where we're closed. There are those that maybe like staples that are there to help support us. Then you have those that maybe just do one day a week, but they are the ones that are consistently there doing the driving, doing a lot of the lifting that we had to help, myself included. I don't really get that much, but some from time to time. There may have been um a compensation. So we just wanted to let you know, this is where your donations are going. That's where we had to fix the door. I'm bringing up and wrapping up. Right there, we got the Community Service Award from the NAACP banquet. There's our new sign. And the question is, will you help us? This is the part that you're probably like, where are we going with this? Um, being that I relocated back here, I left making good money. Many of you may not know, I sold my home and I was living off of that money for a good while. And my parents have been definitely a blessing because the money now is running out. And I have been doing all this for a whole year on a volunteer basis. And like I told you, there have been times where I did maybe get a little compensation, but if it could go to another volunteer to help, I was willing to say give it to that volunteer to help. And um, I remember at the beginning, when I first moved here, I think I mentioned to Mr. Taylor Harvey, I said, is there any way the county can help with supporting, funding at least one posi- position or support with that? At the time, he said no, but I'm back again. Because the numbers are only gonna go up. If I were to step back now, this pantry is gonna dissolve. And we need, if I, like I said, eventually we want to expand more. Um, we're in a rural area when we're um with Chesterfield. Those areas, they're a little more well, there's a lot of more money circulating around. They also may have other locations for people, but we're pretty much it for Amelia County. And we're servicing a lot of people. And my parents have, they're toiled with this and have not maybe really received a lot of the credit that they should. But I'm here tonight as an advocate for them to say that we want to see this pantry continue to stand. And we want to be able to meet the needs of the people. And we are servicing Amelia County people. So why not? If we can give money towards uh the rec centers or if it's, I know sometimes maybe I think it's a donation given to the um, the rescue squad and the fire department, have you considered the Amelia County Food Pantry? And I know no answer may come tonight, but I want to get the ball rolling with how we can support in that area. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Have you, I just want, one, have you had any success in the past and you only personally be doing it for the year on grants as well? Have y'all looked at any or are there, I don't even know, I don't know what's available or may not be available?
Ye- yes, we have, um, because Mr. Harvey put me in contact with Mr. Todd Fortune.
Oh, okay, that was, all right, that same place my thought head was going to.
And that was the thing, he said, when it comes to um paid positions, that is a very hard area in regards to grants. Now, let somebody else know something else, um willing to, to research that. But that's what he told me.
Well, I was just thinking that the grants in general didn't have to be for the paid position, but if you get grants in general, then that cover any amount of the other expenses, then that means then whatever funds you have coming in, you have more fl- flexibility in what those can be used for, including paid position. You know, if you're, you can get grants to cover food, transportation, any of those other things, then whatever whatever donations you have, you can allocate them to other places too. That's, so I wouldn't say, I wouldn't go to limiting your grants necessarily for the position, maybe look a little more broadly at the grant possibilities. But then you've, and then in general, I'll just say, you know, you heard us tonight start, starting on the budget. It's a good timing. Budget cycle is coming up for us. So we have a lot of nonprofits and local organizations that ask for funds in our budgeting cycle. So it's a, you know, it's good time to put that formal request in. Wouldn't be C I P that we're talking about here, but just general, the budget cycle.
Right. And one of the things I also thought about is, because as long, thirty-plus years, the county has never given anything except for a freezer. That was a little baffling to me. And I pre- we appreciate the donations and everything, but not even to just say, here, here's five hundred dollars. Go get some food.
Helpful information to share and again, good, good timing as well.
Good time.
Yes. Thank you.
See what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just think that it's uh that time of year when people give and be a, think, you know, how blessed they've been in their lives, in their jobs and living in, to me, the greatest place on earth, Amelia. That uh, it wouldn't hurt to slip a few dollars to her for donations. Every little bit helps. And that uh, we do need to look at what she said in our upcoming budget. Because I think it's a crying shame that we have nine percent of our population living bo- below poverty level. And if we can look out, not that I'm wanting to take anything from my kids and stuff when they're wrecked and all this and all. But we should look out for our folks in this county that uh less fortunate than uh nine, uh eighty, ninety-one percent of the population in this county and uh I think we need to look into seeing what we can do to help them. I mean, uh, I think anything is better than nothing. You know, we gotta look at for our own. That's, that's my feeling. I, I'd be first to tell you, I do donate to them.
I, as do I, I appreciate.
I do donate to them because I believe in their cause. And they sacrifice a lot of their time and everything and what they're doing. I mean, they retired. They could be doing something else. If they chose to do that, I think it's God's calling and uh it's a worthy cause. That's all I'm gonna have to say. Listen, Brady won't say so.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I sup- I agree, Mr. Jones, would support, support us.
But they're not the only ones. I mean, God has blessed me and uh I talk to them every day and it's one of the things I do is try to help a fellow man. Not to brag about it, I don't want to say that because uh, but we need to help our brothers and sisters.
All right, any more comments? All right. Brings to the emergency operations plan. This is something that's done every four years. Took up a lot of space in our book.
He go read all this, right? Yeah, that's what I thought.
That much?
It's a lot. You better start real quick.
Yeah, what a breakfast.
Like I said, it's something we do every four years. I'd like to have a motion to accept it. Kent's done outstanding job of writing it. Got any questions? We can certainly answer them, but it's, it's pretty, pretty intense. What's the boys' pledge?
Make a motion to approve it as written.
Right, you want to read it in your motion?
Yeah, we can.
All right, gentlemen, there's a motion on floor to approve the emergency operations plan presented by Kent. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Got a River Street lease agreement?
We cut that one off, didn't we?
Nope.
No, this is the boundary line.
No, I'm talking about the river.
Yeah, no. Okay. What did I, I'm looking at this.
All right, we just got to the, but um Prince Edward County has asked. They have an issue with the more or less the Nottaway line, but they have asked that the Mid and Nottaway donate or not donate. Allocate some funds to help perform the survey between the two counties to get the boundary line straight. What I've asked, I don't think Amelia has an issue with boundary lines. This is, in talking with one of the Prince Edward supervisors today, the issue is mainly with Nottaway.
Mr. Chairman, we, we were in court twenty years ago because of uh an issue along the Nottaway line. And the judge uh ruled in the individual's favor and both counties had to chip their money in to survey that lower line. We marked it at each uh highway that we passed, each public highway. Cost us, uh, I think it was ten thousand dollars to do it. It's much longer stretch. But it was taken care of. We've actually marked. There are only two points, to the best of my knowledge, that need to be marked with what Prince Edward's trying to do, what Prince Edward needs to do, because we did the bottom one. We just need to, the, the upper line needs to be marked. For their benefit, nobody in Amelia, whether it's uh any agency or things has ever complained that we have an issue with it. And that's why uh I couldn't come forward and recommend. If Nottaway needs, if Prince Edward feels like they need to get it straight, you know, certainly it wouldn't stand in their way, but I don't really feel the need to pay half of thirty-three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars for it.
They needed, they could pay for it. We haven't received any complaints from.
Yeah, we got a little bitty line like that compared to this. Nottaway is like that.
I mean, there's thirty-four thousand dollars to add to us. We, I mean, if we wasn't, won't spend it on it, I think some other things we just heard leave it worse. And uh agree with you.
Make a motion to deny. Not approve it, we'll move it off.
On the floor, not to approve the boundary line.
Yeah, we don't want to do really nothing.
Yeah, just take notice. All right, I'll just. Won't fight them.
Oh, I'd stick it.
So when you think no action?
Their problem, let's don't worry about it.
All right.
Um, just real quick though, on the emergency operations plan, so we had a specific resolution in there. We didn't, did we? We just set a motion to approve it. Do we need, do we need to be more specific in our in approving that resolution that stated? Because there are some other things in that resolution about like um the Director of Emergency Management's authority, et cetera. Actually, I literally don't know.
Why aren't we going, we approved the plan, why don't we make a motion? Why aren't we going, we approved the plan, why don't we make a motion to review the process? Of approving the res-.
I'll, I'll make such a motion then to approve the resolution as presented to us for the county of Amelia All Hazards Emergency Operation Plan. The resolution of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Easter. Motion on floor to approve the resolution written for the emergency operations plan. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Mr. Easter. Alright, I bring this to the River Street Lease Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, we'll need a, obviously we'll need to hold a public hearing for this, but these are, as Robert Taylor, uh, spoke to earlier, they're leases for three pieces of property at the Soapstone Road, uh, Convenience Center. They're actually going to co-locate inside of the building that we're putting together for the emergency radio system. Uh, Motorola, CTA, and River Street have all worked it out. And I think it's been approved by council here. Then the second, uh, one would be right behind the Wells Fargo building. This is for all fiber, it's not associated with a tower or anything, just gonna hold switching equipment. And the third one is down at a Manborough Convenience Center, same thing. It's, uh, the whole switches for the fiber optic cables that are gonna serve that region. So we've got three leases that have been worked on by council for River Street and Amelia. I'm sure Mr. Gore can go into the legal details if anybody would like, but so it's pretty, pretty simple from this point on, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Gore, any comments?
Not really, I mean, Mr. Chairman, just the state law requires the board to hold a public hearing before we can convey these property interests. So, I mean, this is part of the, the Vatty Grant Project. Um, these are, this is space that, that they've identified as necessary to move forward project. Um, so it's just, that's, that's where it falls in. And, um, we have other leases with them that predate these, that go back to the original wireless project, but these are the most recent ones. We've worked through it with their legal counsel and, um, had a few amendments, but we don't have any concerns with it and now, you know, our recommendation is to, to approve it once you've had the public hearing.
Okay. Supervisors, got any questions?
Yeah, they misspelled Genital Road on page one of twelve. Come on, Jeff.
We'll fix that. We'll get that, we'll get that fixed.
Alright, here, no question with the board. I'll open the public hearing on the River Street Lease Agreements, there's three of them. If anybody wishes to speak for or against them, please come up, state your name and address. Here ain't no comment, I'll close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
Take a motion to approve all.
Motion on floor to approve all three agreements that had been approved by council. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Alright, I bring this to Mr. Myers, is he on?
I think he is.
It's Mr. Lockaby.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me alright?
That's correct.
Mr. Lockaby.
That's right. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. It's Mr. Lockaby, the, the attorney to talk about the report.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Very good, thank you. As Mr. Harvey said, uh, I'm here to tell you about the report that Josh Myers provided. Uh, and to summarize that, hopefully, by way of background, uh, there was an assessment carried out for, uh, twenty twenty-three in Amelia County, a general reassessment of all the real estate in the county. Um, it was carried out by Wampler Eames Appraisal Group. Uh, there were concerns about, um, how that appraisal was carried out. And if you all recall, you, uh, retained me to look at certain, uh, legal process aspects, but I advised you at that time that there were a variety of issues here that really you needed somebody, you needed somebody specifically qualified in the details of how mass appraisal works, at the ground level to, to help you with this, and preferably a statistician who would be able to go through the analysis to determine the actual quality of the assessment. Uh, Josh Myers is a statistician, holds a master's degree in mathematics from University of Virginia. He is, uh, also uh, ha- very experienced in the appraisal and assessment methodologies and the assessment, assessment, assessment methodologies, if you will, um, of the International Association of Assessing Officers or the IAAO. He undertook an analysis of the, um, assessment carried out by Wampler Eames. Um, as you probably had gathered, if you've gone through his, his, uh, his report, hi- his account of the methodology that Wampler Eames followed was very much the same as mine. Um, in as much as it, it is a pretty basic, straightforward, uh, mass assessment approach, not out of line with what you would see, at least from the broad methodological perspective in any locality in Virginia. However, um, he found some, uh, both some things to, to praise and some problems with this. Uh, first, the thing that he felt that he did praise was that there was that the assessments of commercial properties were pretty close to dead on and that they had been appropriately carried out. Now, that's not to say each and every commercial property was right. It's to say that in the run of things, looking all the way across the board, the assessments of commercial properties generally matched what they sold for during the time period in question. However, he found some other areas where there were uh, much greater problems. Um, typically, like, under IAAO standards, you want to see an assessment ratio of between ninety-five and one hundred five percent, which is to say that the assessments are between ninety-five and a hundred five percent of fair market value uh, based upon actual sales that are going on during the six-month period before and after when the assessment takes place. Um, as I said, commercial came in at one hundred four point six percent, which is means that there was a slight overassessment, but it was, you know, within the range of what reasonable people might disagree about. Um, he found that manufactured homes were assessed at sixty-seven percent of their actual sale value. That residential was at seventy-seven percent. And that land, just raw land, ag land, was at seventy-eight point eight percent. So when you, when you look at that, um, a- and, and that's the fair market value, that's not the value, uh, based upon the land use. So if you look at those values, he, uh, he found that the assessments were across those three categories were very low. Uh, he also, uh, found that perhaps there was not adequate stratification of the raw land. Just to say, it wasn't broken up into enough categories because the, uh, land sales seems to be all over the place on both sides of the median. Which means that all of it was grouped together when in fact there were differences between categories that it should have been broken up some more in order to get more accurate assessments within the classifications of properties. Looked at overall, the bottom line is that he finally, well, the bottom line is that the assessment came in very low. Um, he ultimately carried out a, a complete sales ratio study and found that across the board, across all of the property in Amelia County, the assessment was at seventy-six point nine percent of fair market value. Now, the Commonwealth of Vir- a- as I said, IAAO standard is ninety-five to a hundred five percent. Virginia to, defines, uh, well, Virginia gives you both a carrot and a stick with regards to making sure that you've got your assessments at that around a hundred percent area. I- if you, the, the stick is that if it falls below seventy percent or goes over a hundred thirty percent, you lose your share of ABC money. So that's, that's the stick. Um, as far as the carrot, if you are below one hundred percent, um, you get, you take a hit on your public service corporation tax. So public service corporations, which is to say electricity, railroads, those sorts of things that are regulated by the State Corporation Commission, they report all of their property centrally to the State Corporation Commission and they do the assessment, uh, centrally in Richmond. Then they, then the SCC reports back to the Commissioner of the Revenue what the value of all that property is. The Commissioner of the Revenue has to apply the real estate rate to all of that property, regardless of whether it's, you know, you would technically look at it and see it as being machinery and tools or, or real estate or whatever. It's always at the real estate rate. Well, they add a stage in there where they then multiply that by your assessment ratio, which is that ratio of the uh, assessment values to the actual sale values of the property. So you are at seventy-six point nine percent, very close to dropping below that seventy percent threshold that Virginia defines as being close enough to a hundred percent that you get to keep your, uh, uh, your ABC money. But you're also leaving a whole lot of money on the table um, with the state. And I note that the state did a similar methodology and they actually got slightly different answer, but their number was still seventy-nine point two percent based upon the assessment ratio for twenty twenty-three. So in any, a- a- according to the state, you're leaving twenty point eight percent of the value of that public surface corporation property on the table. Um, as well as, again, depending on whether you look at the state, it's either twenty point eight percent or uh, I believe it was twenty-two point one percent um, of the fair market value of the property in the county simply not taxed. So, um, all of that's to say, uh, the recommendations that Josh Meyer has were that there were some places where it fell short of best practices. There were some places where there were simply judgment calls made that were within professional bounds, but apparently just didn't break right. And finally, uh, he simply found that, that we, Amelia County is going to have to have a reassessment in the near future. Amelia has historically gone on six-year cycles. Um, if in year one, you're already down at seventy-six percent, that is telling you that you're going to need to do another reassessment much nearer, much, much sooner than twenty twenty-nine. Um, now Myers did recommend that it is best practice to do assessments every two or at most four years anyway. But he, he said, and I'm going to paraphrase here, it's not nice to, it's not good to be forced into that. It's good for that to be your choice and to be done on your terms rather than, because you, you have an assessment that's kind of forcing you in that direction. Um, I'm ready to answer questions. There's a lot more here. Obviously, a thirteen-page, single-spaced report. I gave you a report that had similarly some, some drilled down legal issues in it. More than happy to answer whatever questions you have. Um, I do know that if you have legal questions, you may want to go into closed session and discuss with, um, uh, Mr. Gore and Mr. Harvey. Mr. Gore and I have spoken before this and, and he's ready to advise you if, if needed, so. I'm here to answer if you have questions.
Mr. Gore, have you seen this document that provided this?
That, that is the, um, document that was emailed, uh, Mr. Lockaby this afternoon. The, the basic package of things to consider, and every board member has a copy of it in front of them.
That's just supporting legal materials that Mr. Lockaby provided for your information.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding was that at least some members of the board, uh, wanted to look at the primary sources that I had pulled out. And I didn't pull out absolutely everything, but I pulled out the most pertinent stuff that dealt with land use, uh, and conservation easements.
Okay. You wanna speak on that, on that then?
Well, that's a, that's a pretty big topic. Are there specific areas that you'd like me to address?
Prepare to get that presentation. He's here for questions at this point, if you have any specifics. And I'm sure he could, we could follow up with written questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sure.
Do you tax timber on a conservation easement if you retain ownership of the timber?
The short answer is that if the, well, so if you have the timber on a conservate, on a con- so let's say you have a conservation easement property, okay? And you are allowed to timber it, then the way that that tax, that that taxation methodology should work is that you value the land and the timber all as one. It's all one whole. However, when you value property that's subject to a conservation easement, you need to look at what the conservation easement leaves and what it takes. And you, and as a tax assessor, you cannot tax what was taken by the conservation easement. So whatever the government or the nonprofit that holds the easement has, you can't tax that. However, you should tax the things that are left behind. Now, if one of those rights that's left behind is the right to use that property for, uh, commercial timber, then it stands to reason that that use is part of that analysis of what the allowed bundle of rights are after the conservation easement is, is taken off the top. If you have two pieces of property otherwise identical right next to each other, one of which you can go to, go in there and take off all the softwoods every twenty-five years, and the other of which all you can do under the terms of its conservation easement is, uh, excuse me, both of these properties have conservation easements. So one, you can go in every twenty-five years and take off the softwoods. The other one, all you can do is use it for, for hiking. Those two pieces of property have different values and that should be recognized in the assessments. Uh, I would suspect that probably recognition of those differences is part, or, or not recognizing those, those differences might be part of why the raw land, uh, coefficient of dispersion in, uh, Josh Myers's su- study showed so much, uh, broad divergence between different pieces of land, uh, and what they sell for.
Uh, so you would have to read every conservation easement to see what you, the owner retained versus what the owner gave up.
Well, the, you would hope that that would be something that was going on on a continuous basis. Every single deed that, uh, that gets filed in, uh, in Amelia County Gets registered by the clerk of court. The clerk of court sends an extract of those deeds to the commissioner of the revenue every month. If there's two or three or four or six or eight conservation easements being done every year. As long as you more or less keep up with it, that's not a huge burden. If you try to take and do seventy five of them in one month, then yeah, I can see where that's a major administrative problem.
Well, who's, uh, whose job is it to check, check these easements and all when it comes to, you know? For the tax purposes?
Or look out.
Landowner have to, uh, go into the commissioner's office and. Explain everything or is it her job to find out just what's what?
When the commissioner of the revenue gets an ex, gets the extract of all of the deeds filed. Some of them are going to say. Conservation easement or open space land easement. Granted by John Smith to the Virginia Wildlife Foundation or. The Department of Conservation and Recreation or whoever it is. You call over to the circuit court and get a copy of that deed. They are in fact mostly form deeds at this point. That people just fill in because that's the, the point of doing one of those deeds is basically to get tax credits. Um, for most investors that are trying to get them.
And you mentioned we need to do a new, a new assessment in the near future.
That was the recommendation of, that Josh Myers had was that your assessment is going to get. So far out of true that it's going to hurt you badly on your, um, public service corporation tax and erode credibility of the assessment if it gets. If you let it go through the entirety of the six year period and the market continues to rise even at a modest pace.
But if the property cards are still wrong. Then we'll still be wrong. After we do another assessment. To me, we need to get the cards corrected first. Then do your assessment.
I think that that might be a, two, well, two points. The first is what, there are different people who make these decisions. So the person whose responsibility it is to make sure that the cards are right is the commissioner of the revenue. The people whose job it is to make sure that the assessment gets done on time is the board of supervisors. And consequently, those two things could be happening simultaneously. But on the other side. Only one of those things is something that you can control. And you can control. When you have a reassessment and who it is who does it. You can't tell them exactly what the answers are going to be. You can't, um. Tell, you can't force the property cards to be right in every sing, in every way, although usually a good assessor will do, put some corrections in during the course of their. Examination of all the properties. But. Half of that equation is just not part of what a board of supervisors can do.
Well, I wouldn't be in, isolating the board. I'm just looking at how to get out of this rat trap. But if we don't have the property cards right. For the assessors to assess the cards. Then we still have bad info at the end of the assessment, just like we have now.
I'm sorry, I didn't, are you looking at me, Mr. Chairman? Yeah. I don't think that I heard everything that was just said.
If the property cards are incorrect. And then we do a, a reassessment, then we still end up in the same boat we're in now. I'm trying to figure out how to get out of this rat trap to where we can get everything right. I mean, if the information is bad going in, then we're going to have bad information coming out.
Well, sir, I don't know exactly how incorrect the cards are. Um. I think that as far as the administrative end of this goes. You do have some ability to, uh. In a sense, upgrade what it is that you're doing on the assessment front. That is something that's within your. Uh, within your control as a board of supervisors. Uh, because as I said, a good assessor goes through. And checks those cards at the time of a reassessment. And you can't, and, and no assessor and no commissioner of revenue in the entire world is going to have every single card be a hundred percent correct. You just can't do that when you've got ninety four hundred parcels in the county. Not going to happen. However, if you have a good process, those are being constantly corrected. When a deed comes through on a piece of property. And the commissioner of the revenue takes a look at their card and that card says that there's four point two acres and the new survey is just filed. It says it's four point three six. They update the card and change the assessment going forward to account for that next. Point one six acres and to up, uh, update things based upon all of the different factors that might have changed. And it doesn't take much time to do that. You take a glance at the deed. Um, you don't even need to pull the deed itself. The extract from the clerk's office will often say. Depending on how they format it. So ideally you have this as an ongoing effort and then when you have a general reassessment, the assessor. Is going through and at least laying an eye on each property and laying an eye on each card and catching what can be caught. But i- if you expect perfection on ninety four hundred property cards. I hate to say, but that's, that's, that's unlikely. It's beyond the, the, the ability of human beings.
So, so I guess the, the, the short is. We paid for an assessment from Markine and they said we were ninety five percent ratio. When actually the statistician went through, we're more in the seventy six percent rate.
Correct. And the state says we're at seventy nine point two percent. So the statistician and the state are right within a couple of percent of each other.
Done.
Separate each contractor to the guarantees of it.
So that's what we, but the chair and I talked about having that discussion at a future meeting, but if you want to get into legal ramifications, that's the closed session.
At least something it should be.
Can we not just answer that? I mean, can we just, this factual statement though of what, whether that's addressed in the contract? We can't just answer that.
Well, the constitution requires a hundred percent assessed value and you know, and the, the expectations are that they be close to that. So. But that, that's what the contract would require.
Thank you.
That was my understanding. Okay.
Uh, that, that's my too. I thought we could just, let's just answer that.
We had, um. I guess we kind of planned on going into closed session tonight and talking some more legal stuff. With this being shown to us and, and some other. And all the questions that's going to arise, I would suggest that maybe we do. A workshop in early January and this is all we discussed. We, we can meet during the day, we can meet during the evening. And everybody had time to get their questions answered. And we get a direction on how we go to fix this issue. Is that? Is that in agreement with the board to have something in early January?
Well, I think we need to. It gives us time to read what we just got tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's fine, but I think we all, I mean, I like Mr. Lockaby saying, I, I think. We need to be careful not to overcomplicate it. I mean, so these documents, I mean, this is just his supporting information to his argument. Like, okay, read them, fine. But it's not new and different information than what he's already telling us. Really, it boils down to, I think, three, three things. We can talk all the time about the, the cards as he's saying. It's not with, it's, that's the biggest thing that keeps coming up, the biggest conversation. He's saying, it's not within our purview. We're going to talk and talk and talk and talk and it's. Not what we're going to get fixed. Most of what we talk about are things that are not within our purview. That two things then that are within our purview. It's when and if we do another assessment. And I think that's a rather straightforward discussion. I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing with your workshop. I'm just like, but like even we have a workshop. I think we can get more focused here. And then the other, which we can go into closed session for a legal consultation is. What do we do regarding the contract and law for readings? And I think, I think it's really important for us though to, to stay focused on. What our options and, and points are with that because over the last couple of months. It's just gotten really broad, really big and particularly going down paths that we don't control. Which is not helpful for any of us. Cause it doesn't, it doesn't lead us to, it doesn't lead us to anything that we can do anything about or, or get us, yeah, we're, we're not going to be able to solve for it. So what could we do things about?
But if we could continue to spend bad money?
Well, if you, you know, going back to Josh Myers' documents. Much of the reason that it's off and low, it, he, Mr. Lockaby is not, I don't hear him saying, nor do I think Josh's letter said neither one point to. Large volumes of erroneous cards. That can be, I'm not. I know there's a difference of opinions on that, but the two people we've hired so far are not pointing to that as the foundational issues. Josh Myers' information is coming back to, it's about how the appraisers did their value. And their methodologies. So you could hire and do another appraisal company using the methodologies that Josh is pointing to. With the exact same cards that we had and theoretically you would be in the right spot. It, it's, I mean, we paid for these recommendations. The recommendations are use a different methodology.
But we also paid. To have everything checked out, measured, updated, corrected, property cards straight. And I mean, I'm not saying it's a hundred percent.
But I said, and the, the point was let's have legal discussion about how we deal with the con, the contractual issues.
Deal not fixed though. So I mean, do we fix it? Or do we just keep doing what we're doing?
Well, I think we'll fix something. We'll get somewhere in legal discussions or assessment.
Right. Right, exa- exactly. All the cards that have been noted that need to be fixed are going through the, the issue are going through to be fixed. If they weren't identified to be fixed, the only way to identify them to be fixed is to hire. Theoretically better, and there's few options. This is the problem, appraisal company to come through next time, find out if they're fixed.
Maybe we're at the point of going in-house.
Well, I, I think we have some options, you know, I think all of it. I think, I think we've agreed what direction we got to go. And I think the direction we need to go is legal counsel and figure out what we're going to do with this contract, which should be in closed session.
Would agree with you. And then make our decision one, when or if a new assessment. I, I don't know that we need a whole set of workshops for when and if to do it. I didn't assess myself. I'm not opposed to one, but.
What's the board's plan?
You want to do a closed session to discuss contract? Why don't we do it? I mean, I don't know how everybody's timetable flexibility.
Session, I do, right?
Well, I don't know if you are or not.
Oh, I thought we had one for real estate. I thought we were doing a closed session of real estate anyway. So. Oh, okay.
Maybe have I missed something?
It's on? I know, I know it was supposed to. Are you not now?
We can, sure.
On real estate.
Some of y'all said you were.
It's about.
I know.
You know what it's about.
Yeah, you told us.
That's right.
You told us before, yeah. I'm just saying, if we're already going to closed session, we could do a closed session for the contract as well. We're not going to get new information on the contract coming up later. At least what it is.
All right. I missed that thing. All right, well, we. Mr. Lockaby, can you stay on and, and join us in closed session and probably? Fifteen, twenty minutes?
Well, just go silent and turn off my video.
We'll have to call it back though, but so, yeah. We'll, we'll call you on the phone from the closed session room, mate.
Okay, that'll be perfect. Thanks.
We just, we can make any more progress to me.
Yeah, yeah.
We're here.
All right. So that brings us to the resolution for this. The Maine County Spring Green Cleanup. That's another one of those every year things, but it doesn't have a date somewhere between January first and May fourth. The resolution says. What's the board's plan?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion for approval to approve and more discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Bring the Health Department budget. From what I understand, they have run, they are. They need about thirty thousand dollars. Mr. Harvey, can you, can you elaborate on that?
I, me, Mr. World.
Mr. World. Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, so the original budgeted amount for the Health Department, um. Was, uh, one hundred and fifty four thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars. The L G A that we got back for F Y twenty four from the Health Department totals a hundred and eighty two thousand, four hundred and seventy six dollars. This is more information for you guys, just awareness, but, um, the twenty seven thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollar difference between the two. Will be drawn down some about ten thousand dollars with leftover F Y twenty three contribution to the Health Department. So when they, when they went through their year end settlement. They had ten thousand more dollars from us than what they actually needed. So we're applying that to F Y twenty four, which offset that difference of twenty seven thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars. The, the point is that the Health Department's budget line is underestimated by twenty seven thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars. Okay. So just awareness is going to be a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. And the, the likelihood that they'll spend all of it is probably not the case. It'll probably be like every year we have money left over that we just roll forward with them.
So what action did we need to make?
Well, I would say that you guys probably want to appropriate, um, the additional, um, money that is needed. Um, that way we can have that account corrected and that way we can also realize that it is a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars versus a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars.
So what is the amount that we need to help?
Um, I need to get the ten thousand dollar figure back. It's not a true ten thousand dollar figure. Once I get it, it's right here.
Ten thousand, twenty four dollars nineteen cents.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, it would be the difference between that ten thousand and twenty seven thousand.
What, uh, maybe just, I guess I didn't follow us. What caused the original variance?
Yeah, so we get a budget estimate from them during our budget process. It's typically around February, March. The figure that they gave us at that time was the one fifty fourth, hundred and fifty four thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars. Then when they finished out their F Y twenty three settlement. Or I'm sorry, when they did their, um, actual L G A based on what they project as their expenditure.
I'm sorry, what is the L G A?
Local government agreement. Yeah, it's an annual document. It's a contract basically between the Commonwealth and the, the county. That process, the, the explanation that I got from the, of R D H was the, um, percentages. Changed because of our ability to pay more essentially. That percentage changed. Do I think that the original budget was estimated correctly? No, I don't because that shouldn't be a twenty seven thousand dollar difference all at one point. So. I would have expected maybe four, five thousand dollars, but not twenty seven thousand dollars. So unfortunately, we're, we're bearing the impact of that.
It was too big of a difference. I wouldn't sign the contract and send them, send. It was too big of a difference. I wouldn't sign the contract and send them, send it back because we didn't have the money budgeted and it wasn't close. So that's why we brought it to the board for a decision.
Now, what's the board's plan? I would like to have the correct, whatever appropriation I would like to have it number in the motion.
I think it's sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cent if it's an exact twenty-seven thousand difference.
It's twenty-seven thousand six twenty-four and it, it was ten thousand.
Ten thousand twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Twenty-four, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yeah, that's stated in what, in the letter.
Yeah, that, that difference is seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. That was what we would need to appropriate, including that ten thousand dollars we're applying to it, which offset it.
Okay, what's the board's plan?
What happens if we don't do it?
I don't know that y'all wanna go down that road, I think.
What I'm saying, I mean, it's not like you have an option.
The thread is no service program.
Yeah.
Well, you have the, I, I mean, and it seems like it's two different, two different things though. You, if, even if we appropriate this, or you could sign the contract and the budget amount didn't change. So you're, I mean, the budget was approved, even if you can still sign the contract, I mean, saying we agree to the services, I I mean, it feels like it's actually more accurate to say, oh, they overspent from what we budgeted, you know? I don't know, but just keep, every time you just keep adjusting, we lose all history of that. Whatever. You don't have, I agree, you don't have a requirement. I mean, you don't have an option but to sign the agreement with Department of Health, but um.
I make a motion that we give them what they need. I mean, it's full public health. That's something else we need to.
Oh, to be clear, I would, that was, I agree, we're gonna do it. It's just whether you adjust the line item or not.
Alright, there's motion on the floor to appropriate the line item.
So do you have?
Really?
The figure is that we would be appropriating.
Seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cent.
Okay.
Plus the ten thousand carryover from last year's budget.
Okay.
So that gave you a twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cent total.
Mister Jones, would you mind add, letting Todd add those to your motion?
Let him add, it makes him happy. I'm happy.
Alright, motion on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Alright, it brings to the elderly tax relief. Sean, I think you put this on the agenda. Last word.
Yeah, I just, my, my last month here, I figured one more time we'd bring it up and uh, or since that pretty much a breakdown of what we currently have and what we had all talked about and uniformly agreed on for the new process. So I thought I'd bring it up one more time and see if we can uh, take care of, care of our vulnerable elderly and disabled and go ahead and approve the new program.
What's the board's plan?
It's all, it's, yeah, it's all recapped right here in the.
I think the only thing that we, we don't really have is, is the historical data where people are disqualified nearly, the program's shrinking because, because we haven't um, kept up with the uh, you know, pace of uh, social security increases. And we did all agree to the uh, seven fifty cap. Um, which I thought was, that was a good idea to, so, so it does have a, a cap to it.
Alright, bud.
Mister Chairman, procedurally, just be clear where you're headed here. So this would require amending the ordinance, which you can't do tonight. I mean, you could direct staff to prepare and advertise the ordinance, but it, you can't just make the change legally and you could head down the path.
I did some rough figuring last night when I was finishing up reading. I think that cap is gonna hurt most people. The program we have in place, we are helping develop. It's pretty good. We've got one of the lowest tax rates in the surrounding areas. And it's no cap on the deduction. When they get a seventy-five percent deduction on their taxes, they get seventy-five percent. They don't get say that, say that deduction was twelve hundred, it's seventy-five percent. Well, we would cap it at seven fifty. So now they got a pace on sight. I mean, I guess I believe it like it is.
But that's not the, to be clear, that's not really the issue that we're here. The problem, the what we would be changing is who's eligible.
I think that's.
That's, that's the big, that's the big issue that we're, we're changing.
We can eliminate the cap.
Yeah. Try and take the cap out. It's the eligibility that's the big change. So the problem is how few people are even eligible right now. That's what, that's what we're trying to change.
I think it's like a hundred and fifteen people from what the past emails back again.
Because it's, well, it's gone down, it goes down every year because we're not, because we're not a job, because we're not a justice.
Yeah, the, the income eligibility rates.
Okay, what's the board's plan that we have to work on something and do anything to pay?
Well, every time we give a certain group a tax break, another group has to pick up the slack to start paying more taxes. There is very few out here, and I know there is some, that can afford to pay a whole lot more taxes. But we gotta look at everybody, not just the elderly, but the young people and all the families and stuff who like uh, Ms. Worsham saying, they're struggling to feed their kids or buy anything because of the way everything is out here now. I mean, it's like David said, we got some of the lowest taxes around. And that's one reason why so many people like moving out here is called our low taxes. But we can't penalize another group of people because we're gonna help this side out. Although I wish we could, but in reality, we can't. I think it should just uh, is like the chairman said, and uh, let's just uh, let this die, slow death, or pass death, whatever you want, so.
So those, I mean, those same most vulnerable people that, that need to put pantry and other, I mean, the most vulnerable population being that it's, and I think we need to clarify here, it's not all elderly. Elderly have very, very little income and permanently disabled people with very, very little income. So that's fine. We don't have to agree. That's the nature of democ, that's the nature of democracy.
This doesn't affect disabled though, does it?
Yes.
I thought they were.
Actually, no.
I thought they were regardless. They're not.
Okay. It's, it's el, it's elderly and disabled. So it's elderly and permanently disabled, permanently disabled. It's not temporary. With, that meet these very low income thresholds. So I'll make a motion and we can get on record again for how we feel. Make a motion that we direct staff to proceed with uh, alter the ordinance for the previously negotiated changes from the committee.
Well, that wouldn't be correct. Cause we did a fifty thousand max on the committee.
Well, said the previously negotiated from the committee. So that was not, that was not much.
Alright.
That was a motion.
Alright, motion on the floor to provide staff to to get together the the, the new options for the elderly tax relief.
To, to, to prepare an ordinance.
Changes to the preparal. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. I didn't catch that.
It's three to two. You or he are out. Motion passed.
No, no, I just raised my hand too quick. It's a little buzz.
Mister Chairman, is it all clear? Could you, could you call the role of this?
Yeah. Alright, do you have some questions on the hand, vote, call for a roll? All in favor of the?
Individually. Just poll the, poll the members.
Start with Dexter.
Mister Jones?
A or N?
N. Mister Wyatt?
Yes.
Robinson?
N.
Mister Easter?
Yes.
No vote N. Alright, motion fails. But we could decide. Alright. Take care of the sent to, to the harvest.
Alright, first uh, first item, Virginia County Administrator's report, Police Management Check. This uh, there's two different numbers here. In the letter, it says two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I think that's correct. The uh, I think the uh, board letter is incorrect. Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. CRC report is in, and I, I will make a note that this, the CRC redo update that was given today is final. And there's, there will be a final report out that uh, everybody will be able to read uh, as soon as uh, Melody is able to send it around. I think it's, they're recommending that we start our own regional economic development group to the two thirty-five or so thousand dollars per county, which is about double what we were paying when we were with the other one. The lower group, DMB Select Report, elected thirty-four hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the month. And along with the DMB Select Board, I wanna remind everybody that DMB Select is gonna be closed next week. We've got one employee in there and she needs to burn some time, so she will be closing down Christmas week. There is a letter from DEQ here. They have done a compliance inspection. The yearly compliance inspection of the Maplewood landfill and we have a letter, a no deficiency letter. So we passed. There's the, the last thing is uh, the chairman and all board members have gotten a letter from the Virginia Lawyers Association. Uh, they're coming back around again because it's budget uh, time again, looking for an amendment to an ordinance that'll adopt tax exemption for uh, logging, off-road logging equipment from Amelia County. For your information. Mister Chairman, that's all I've got on that list.
Alright, thank you, Mister Harvey. Uh, it's gonna be more members comments before we go into closed session. Mister Robinson?
Well, ain't nobody here to talk to. Uh, I was gonna tell everybody to have a Merry Christmas, enjoy time with your family. Be safe and uh, be thankful for what you have, cause there's a lot out here that don't have it.
Easter?
I think that was well said. I'll leave, leave it without.
Thank you, Mister Easter.
Mister Jones?
Well, I almost have to agree word for word what Mister Robinson said. I'm scared to death.
Yeah, I am too.
But y'all have a Merry Christmas and uh, let's hope twenty-four is gonna be a good year to, in this country gets turned around.
Mister Wyatt?
Um, I guess since it's my last term, I get to talk tonight. But first, um, before we go any farther, since we're talking about first responders tonight, I'll be, I need to acknowledge uh, Mister Harvey's um, on the rescue squad and his service to that. I know he doesn't talk about it much, but he's out there and I, how many years? Do you even know?
I've been, it's, well, no, it's not been that long.
I know, they just, it's hard to keep up.
I've been an EMT for over five years.
Okay.
And I drove for several years before that. But I also had a, a ten-year-old fire department way back in the day.
Thank you for that, you know, it's, it's things that people just, just don't know, you know, it's especially in volunteer communities, you have regular jobs and do that on the side, but um. Um, definitely, you know, wanna thank the community, thank my fellow board members for serving along beside me. It's, it's, it's been a fun, interesting four years, you know, I, before we probably all started this, somebody, there were people telling you to do it and people telling you not to do it. And um, I'm glad I did, you know, I'm thankful for that, um. Thankful that God allowed me to have the extra time to put on another hat to make it happen. I hope that I um, tried to commit, you know, as much time as I could, the proper amount of time and balance life and, and everything else, but I'm really looking forward to getting back, doing more with the fire department and community service. That's, that's really where my heart's at, um. The, the immediate needs. And um, but thank the community for all the support, um, over the years, it's been great, um. It, it, you know, you can't always make everybody happy, but in the end, I mean, I, the, the appreciation has just been, it's, it's truly humbling. It's an honor to be in this position and definitely don't take that lightly and um, you know, I think, thank you guys for stepping up and doing it as well, um. And I mean, I've been, I've been trying to be pretty quiet and professional the last four years, but I've gotta go out and say, I just wanna quote Brooks and Dunn. Um, you better kiss me, cause you're gonna miss me when I'm gone.
You gotta shave.
Well, I ain't kissing you.
Just Merry, Merry Christmas, everybody. Have a, have a safe, safe holidays.
Thank you, Mister Wyatt, for your service. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Mister Gold, would you like to read us, make a motion to go into closed session?
Chair, Mr. Chair, so we, we, we need a motion to go into closed session for two reasons. Um, one is under Virginia Code, section two point two thirty-seven eleven A three, to discuss the acquisition or disposition of real property, publicly held property, um, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect bargaining position of the county. Um, and pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight, for consultation with legal counsel regarding the twenty twenty-three general real property assessment contract.
Thank you, Mister Gold. Would I like to put in form of motion? Mister Easter, motion on floor to go into closed session. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Right now, in closed session.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, we're out. A closed session. We need a motion and roll call vote to certify that the all that is discussed in the session were those identified in the motion as permitted under the Freedom of Information Act. Motion and roll call.
Thank you. Mr. Gold motion on floor.
I certify.
I didn't. I was not.
I still moved.
And I certify.
I sort of.
I sort of. I sort of.
We're already. We're already. So now you.
Ah.
You probably should say so. Yeah.
Enjoy.